Madam Clerk, the time is 6:45 PM. I call to order this special closed session of City Council, Management of Emeryville Services Authority. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1330 Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or emissions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Service Authority, or related meeting. The City is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings, discriminatory statements, or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act. For example, statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
And Mayor Welch?
Here. Item three is ex parte communications. Members, does anyone have any ex parte communications to report on for this agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. Item four is public comment on closed session items. Any member of the public that would like to comment on any items on the closed session agenda can do so now for two minutes. I see no members of the public here with us, therefore I will now close public comment. Item five is closed session. Madam Clerk, we will cover items 5.1, 5.1.1, and 5.1.2 in closed session and report out. The time is 6:47 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
The time is seven eleven P M. We have returned from closed session. Mister City Attorney, could you please report out on any actionable items?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the time is still seven eleven P M. This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting for those waiting starts at seven fifteen.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
The time is seven fifteen P M. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in person at thirteen thirty Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that could potentially violate the Fair Employment Housing Act, such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
And Mayor Welch.
Present. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
To approve the agenda.
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? No? Okay, thank you. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items on the agenda. If any member of the public would like to comment for the consent agenda or items on this agenda can do so now for two minutes. Going once, going twice. Seeing and hearing no comments, Madam Clerk will now close public comment. Item six is the consent calendar. Members, would any of you like to pull an item off consent for discussion? If not, do we have a motion on the consent?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
All second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Thank you. I'm seven. Action items and we have none. Madam Clerk, the time is seven seventeen P M. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is still seven seventeen P M. I call to order this meeting of the City Council. This meeting is being conducted here in person at thirteen thirty three Park Avenue here in Emeryville. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticism about the policies, procedures, and programs or services of the city or of the acts or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act, such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion on approval of the final agenda?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Item four is special orders of the day. We have quite a few people here joining us. Item four point one is proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming May as Water Safety and Drowning Prevention Month. The proclamation is as follows. Whereas May as Water Safety and Drowning Prevention Month was established through a collaborative effort across the country to promote water safety and drowning prevention, and whereas education regarding the topic of water safety plays an essential role in the prevention of drowning and recreational water-related injuries among children and swimmers of all ages. And whereas the California Department of Public Health reports three thousand six hundred ninety-three injury deaths due to drowning from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two among Californians, two thousand nine hundred thirty-one hospitalizations, and nine thousand seven hundred thirty-four emergency room visits for non-fatal drowning. And whereas Emeryville, California acknowledges the public significance of the California Water Safety Strategy, which highlights knowledge gaps, major priorities, and action areas where focus is required to reduce the burden of drowning across the state. And whereas Emeryville has its own considerations and context for drowning prevention, including swim lessons, pool safety, visitor safety, partnerships with community organizations, community education, and public awareness campaigns. And whereas Emeryville, the California Water Safety Strategy and the community at large acknowledge that drowning is a complex issue that and that with progress in reducing the burden and occurrence of fatal and non-fatal drowning requires collaboration between different sectors and stakeholders with diverse perspectives and approaches. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of May is hereby declared Water Safety and Drowning Prevention Month in the City of Emeryville, California, proclaimed by the Mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four. And who do we have to... Come on, community services. That's why she brought you here.
I'm just really happy to be here. Clap it up for that. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. I'm just honored. And just just to spread the awareness about water safety is super important. I think it's something that's overlooked. And you never know until, you know, something happens. So just for us all to be aware, you know. What you do know is knowledge. You could teach anybody if you do know something about it. And that's why I'm super just happy to be here and supporting this. Yeah, good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much for recognizing Water Safety Month and Drowning Prevention here with the City of Emeryville. I'd like to take this time to really emphasize why this is so important. For me personally, I didn't know the importance of water safety until I was twenty-four years old, when I learned how to swim. And since then, it really pivoted my life and turned my life one eighty to where put me in a direction where I'm standing in front of you today. And, you know, working with the team of lifeguards, with Rebecca, and all the C S D to, you know, put our programs together and put events like when we have this upcoming Saturday, Water Safety Day. A new event within our department where we get to show and train the community members on how to be water safe. And that starts at home, at the pool, in the bathtub, how to wear a life jacket. And so, uh, just... Thank you. And I hope we get to see you at the event. If not, please look out for some photos because it's an event that we hope to do every year for this month. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Members, any comments? No?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to add that water safety is not just a health issue. It is a racial equity issue. Drowning is one of the leading causes of death of black children all throughout the nation. And knowing not just how to swim, but how to be safe when you're in the water, whether you are out at the beach or in a pool or even in the bathtub is something that is very, very important. And so I appreciate our community services, department staff, who work every day to keep the water spaces here in Emeryville safe. And just thank you for your contribution to our community. So thank you.
All right. Next up, item four point two, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming May twenty twenty-four as Older Americans Month. The proclamation is as follows. Whereas within the City of Emeryville reside countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas the City of Emeryville is committed to engaging and supporting older adults and their families and caregivers. And whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age. And whereas the City of Emeryville can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living and involving older adults and community planning events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mend for. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that May twenty twenty-four is hereby proclaimed as Older Americans Month. And every resident is urged to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community, proclaimed by the Mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Who do we have here to proclaim or to collect this proclamation?
Where are they? Yeah.
I would just like to comment that on behalf of the Senior Center, we honor older Americans every month or every year in May with the annual pancake breakfast that we will be hosting on May seventeenth from nine to eleven. And we would love to see any council members there that are up that early in the morning to join us for breakfast and to celebrate with our senior community. Thank you, Ken.
I'm here. And as the Chair for the Commission on Aging, I want to thank you for recognizing the value that seniors bring to the City of Emeryville. And I also want to compliment the Council for all the work that you've done to build the below-market housing opportunities for seniors. I you've heard me before saying that the seniors deal with a lot of disabilities, not always recognized as common disabilities, but financial disability is something that is important to recognize. And the State of California in their twenty twenty-one Master Plan for Aging recognized that seniors, the population of seniors has doubled in the last ten years. And in twenty thirty will is expected to be twenty-five percent of the entire population of California. And Emeryville has a sizable portion of seniors. Many living in Watergate, but which is twenty-five percent, I think, of Emeryville. But the point is that I've been trying to, I will always put it this way. I will stimulate the Council to maybe finding ways to give age a priority in below-market. I've talked with the City Attorney, and it isn't something that can be done easily because there is a conflict. And so I I reach out to to inquire for you to maybe find a way of giving seniors some kind of recognition for their disability as maybe being a priority or realize that citizens that live here in Emeryville right now have top priority over everyone else. But I'm asking for the senior element to also be added. And I, once again, compliment you for being the leader in the state for your housing efforts. That's something to be proud of. And I speak of you frequently whenever I'm speaking about this topic outside of these chambers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, any comments? Just want to acknowledge the role seniors play in our communities and in our families as a very proud granddaughter of an Emeryville resident. I, um, what I really appreciate about Emeryville is it thinks about what does it look like to live in Emeryville across your lifespan? And what does it look like to be accessible as a very young person and then as an adult? And as we, as we age and wanting Emeryville to be accessible to everyone at any age? So, um, thank you to my colleagues and our city staff that help recognize that value in our city. Yes, Member Pryforce?
So, I, uh, thank you for what you shared about our, uh, our older Emeryville residents and, um, and many of them who are in BMR programs and BMR units. And the question of, of BMR is going to come up in, in this agenda. And, um, and there's a lot that we can do, not just when it comes to their status in the BMR unit, but just when it comes to accessibility. I think there's more that Emeryville can do to ensure that our city sees, recognizes them and make sure that their, that their existence is, is something that isn't just tolerated like it is in other cities, but loved and embraced. And, uh, and we want to make sure that people, especially older, poorer people feel loved and embraced and that they are not invisible. So, that's what we say.
Thank you. And last one up, item 4.3, Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, proclaiming May 2024 as Affordable Housing Month. Proclamation is as follows. Whereas affordable homes are vital to healthy, safe, and racially just communities, and whereas East Bay housing organizations proudly commemorate its 40th anniversary, it continues to champion affordable housing in the East Bay, fostering a racially and economically just community for all. And whereas even before current high inflation rates, increasing housing costs led longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes, or experience homelessness threatening our region's racial diversity and economic opportunity. And whereas stable homes are the solution to homelessness and support seniors, families, youth, veterans, people with disabilities or special needs, and our whole community. And whereas the upcoming November 2024 ballot presents a unique opportunity to vote on a regional bond that will generate upwards of $10 to $20 billion for the creation of affordable housing and homelessness solutions across the nine counties, signaling the importance of unity among our communities. And whereas this general obligation bond measure would build and preserve tens of thousands of new affordable homes, house hundreds of thousands of our neighbors, and generate tens of thousands of jobs. And whereas local housing organizations are continuing to recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month because regional action to a growing regional housing crisis is an essential part of recovery from the pandemic and the work to ensure that everyone has an affordable and stable home. And whereas East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 28 years, acknowledging the need for and benefits of affordable homes. Now there be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of May 2024 is hereby proclaimed as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Emeryville, and be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville will continue to work to support affordable and stable housing at the local, regional, state, and federal levels, proclaimed by the Mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, May 7, 2024. And we've got folks. No one's here from EPO, but if anyone had any comments. Member Pryforce?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to mention that's what's missing on the proclamation is that also on the ballot is hopefully a possible repeal of Costa Hawkins. Being from New York, from Brooklyn, I'm used to a, a, a culture of residency where a person can be in their home, even to the moment that they pass away and they transition 40, 50 years as a renter in a rent-controlled, rent-stabilized home. And many Realtor organizations and lobbying organizations and apartment associations don't like that scenario. They don't like long-term resident stability, continuity. And so as we're thinking about affordable housing, I also want to keep our renters, particularly our renters who, who struggle to pay rent every month. I'd like to keep them in view and, and hope that we can, and, and hope that, that in November, the voters will decide that rent control should be a part of the conversation as to how do we continue to make housing affordable.
Any other comments? Member Bouters?
Thank you. This is, I'm grateful to the mayor for putting this on the agenda. And I just want to add to prior comments that there's a lot of housing that goes undiscussed in the affordable housing discussion because it exists already in the community. It's older housing stock. It's housing stock that does not meet the common modern-day definition of affordable housing, but is really important to protect and preserve. And we often talk about tenants' rights and rent control, and those are very important things to, to have discussion about and to ensure that we protect as somebody who was a tenant attorney for years, I understand the importance of protections. And we also talk about production and the importance of making sure that we make enough homes affordable for people who want to live in our community and stay here. But as someone whose first home was a boarding house, I just want to talk about briefly the importance of ensuring that we protect homes and we preserve housing that exists in our community today that is affordable to people who are in those gap spaces. People who worked two or three jobs, as I did, and had, you know, other types of social and economic challenges, but really want to remain in communities. And it's really important that, that the laws we pass and the protections we provide don't overlook the need to preserve housing that we have here. And so I'm grateful to the voters of Emeryville in 2018 for approving Measure C. And I'm grateful to the Housing Committee, to the advocates at EPO, and all the others who have partnered with us in the past to ensure that our housing expenditure plan includes preservation so that people who've lived in Emeryville and housing that's been here for decades have the chance to stay here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everything's been said. Item five, Announcement of Commission and Committee Vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just wanted to provide a reminder that we are in the middle of the annual recruitment for our commissions and committees. We have 31 vacancies across the advisory bodies. We've received six applications so far. The deadline is May 28th, and the application is available on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, City Council Special, City Council Member Special Announcements and Reports on Meetings and Attendance. Anybody have anything to announce or to report on? All right. Item seven, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just quickly repeat the two that Community Services mentioned. One is the Water Safety Day at the ECCL Pool. That's on Saturday, May 11th, from noon to 3:00. Everybody's invited. Thank you, Chad. The second was the Pancake Breakfast, which is at the Senior Center on Friday, May 17th, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, Kim. And then one that wasn't mentioned was Bike to Wherever Day is May 16th, and that's from 7:00 to 10:00. We've got five Energizer stations in the city, so hopefully we'll see people biking out there to those and having fun on the 16th. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item eight is Ex parte communications. Members, please review the agenda just one more time. And does anyone have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Yes, Member Bouters?
Item 10.7, the Tobacco Retailer License. I've spoken with the advocates.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Item nine is Public Comment for the Consent Agenda. An item's not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on an item on the consent agenda or an item not on this agenda can do so now for two minutes. Going once, going twice. All right. I am now closing public comment. Item 10, it's the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve all the items on the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Item 11 is Public Hearings. Item 11.1, the Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending the City of Emeryville Master Fee Schedule for the Fiscal Year 2024, 2025. Lawrence, how are you?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request a wave presentation.
Do we have any objections to that? Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Madam Clerk, the time is 7:41. I now open this public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this item can do so now for two minutes. Seeing and hearing none, I am, the, uh, the time, not the time. The time is 7:41, Madam Clerk. I close comment on the item. Members, I turn it to you for deliberation or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Item 12, our action items. Our first up, item 12.1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, approving revised program guidelines for the Emeryville First-Time Homebuyer Program. Hi, Valerie.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing wonderful. How are you guys?
Moving right along.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie Bernardo. I'm the Housing Coordinator here at the City of Emeryville. And I'm coming here to talk to you guys about our First-Time Homebuyer Program Guidelines. Next slide, please. So, the City of Emeryville has been very successful in implementing First-Time Homebuyer Program Assistance for a long time. We issued our first loan in 1991, and our last loan was issued in 2021. Over the span of 30 years, we have issued 561 First-Time Homebuyer Assistance Loans, building a little bit over $19 million. We currently have 184 loans, are currently still active within our portfolio that we're monitoring. Those 561 loans were funded through a variety of funding sources. We had four programs we previously operated. Two of them were funded by Redevelopment Authority. That was our First-Time Homebuyer Loan Program, as well as our Ownership Housing Assistance Program. We also received funding in the past through the State of California. They provided funding through our Cal Home Program and our Housing Enabled Local Partnership Down Payment Assistance Program. The last time the program guidelines were updated related to our First-Time Homebuyer Programs was in 2013. And those guidelines were updated at that time because Redevelopment Authorities were ceasing to exist, and so we lost the funding that was supporting the program. There also was a change in market conditions. 2013 was after the foreclosure crisis, and we needed to come up with some changes to the program at that time to, one, reduce our risk. We didn't have as much funding that was available, and also to address market conditions. So, the guidelines were modified in that time period in order to address the reduction in funding and the market conditions and to ensure funding was used for the most at need. Some of those program changes included removing the utilization of the program for our BMR units, reducing the amount of assistance available. And, and they did that through coming up with an interesting scenario for how you calculate our First-Time Homebuyer Loan Amount. So, that's what last happened in the program since 2013. As I mentioned, our last loan closed in 2021. So, from 2013 to today, we have closed one loan. So, that's over 10 years with only one person utilizing our program. For the most part, it has sat dormant. Next slide. So, I'm here today because we've had a couple of initiatives that have occurred over the last couple of years that really lend us towards, moving towards, supporting homeownership opportunities in Emeryville. The first one was in 2013, the City Council adopted our Affordable Housing Bond Administration Plan. It was a $64 million plan. Of that plan, $1.95 million was dedicated to support homeownership through a down payment assistance program, also considered First-Time Homebuyer Assistance Program. Additionally, in 2022, December exactly, we also adopted our 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Plan. That housing element identifies what the city's goals and priorities and policies are going to be over the next eight years related to housing. Within the housing realm, we did identify homeownership as one of our policy initiatives. In fact, we had three policy initiatives. One is Policy H24 to promote homeownership opportunities. The second is Policy H31 to utilize available federal, state, local financing sources and subsidies to make housing more affordable to very low and, low and moderate income households. And then Policy H44, which is to collaborate our efforts to connect our low-income residents with empowerment resources and homeownership programs. Those three policies support one of our program initiatives, which is Program M, our Homebuyer Assistance Program. Within that program, we identified a variety of steps that the state wanted to see as to how we were going to make homeownership assistance a program that we were supporting. And within that, the very first action step we identified was to evaluate our First-Time Homebuyer Loan Programs because we had not had a high utilization in the past. So, that's what we're here today, is addressing the first one. The second one will be to issue our Measure C Affordable Housing Bonds related to our Down Payment Assistance Program, and then of course launching. So, the first three steps are all interrelated, and the first action we're doing tonight will help us on the path to achieving three of those action steps. Next slide. So, I mentioned that we wanted to make some changes. So, why do we want to make changes today in 2024? One, the market has drastically changed. We're not in a post-foreclosure crisis. We have seen an increase in interest rates and a drop in interest rates, so we need to be able to be adaptable with market conditions. We've also done an analysis looking at our program guidelines and have determined that there are some confusing components of those program guidelines. We now have a new funding resource. We lost Redevelopment Authority over 10 years ago, but we have our new funding through the Measure C Housing Bond. And we also want to make sure that when we're devising any kind of program, that we're taking a look at making sure that that program is equitable, provides an equitable access to all of people who are interested in living in Emeryville. So, with those four reasons, we started looking at what kind of changes we want to make to our guidelines. Next slide. So, with that, we have the benefit of working with Hello Housing. They're our BMR Homebuyer Assistance and Rental Program Administrator. They also administer the Alameda County AC Boost Down Payment Assistance Program that was launched a couple of years ago. We have the benefit through working with them that they recently had to go through the process of evaluating that Down Payment Assistance Program for the county and determining whether or not there's modifications they needed to do based on the market changes. Through that analysis, they identified that there was an equity lens that had not previously been looked at in developing their program, and they decided to do some additional digging. And so we have the benefit of that analysis that we can use in determining what we want to do in this program. What Hello Housing found was of the 73 people who had purchased homes through the AC Boost Program, those homebuyers had to bring between $15,000 and $194,000 of their own cash funds to cover the borrower's contribution and closing cost. This again is $15,000 to $194,000 for our low and moderate income households, which is a significant amount of liquid cash assets that a homebuyer is required to have. Through that analysis, they went back and said, what happened? Because in looking at those who originally submitted a pre-application to the program, there was 2,294 people who had done a pre-application. To those who actually went and submitted a complete application, which was only 265, why is there such a difference in those who were originally interested in the program based off of their racial demographics and those who actually submitted an application? And what they found was that there was a huge reduction of those people who were interested in the program that were African-American or Latinx that submitted applications to those who actually, I'm sorry, to those who submitted a pre-application, to those that actually went through and submitted a full application. So, in looking at the chart on the screen, you'll see that 28.4% of the people who identified that they had a pre-application for the program that were African-American, when you actually looked at who actually submitted an, an application, it dropped all the way down to 19.6%. When you looked at actually who actually purchased homes, it then furthered dropped to sixteen percent of the pool. For the Latinx community, there also was a drop, a huge decline, seventeen point three identified in interest. Those who actually submitted an application was ten point seven. There was a slight increase in those who closed. It was about twelve point four percent of the seventy three actually represented the Latinx community. With that information, they then went and surveyed all of those who did not submit applications and asked, why did you not submit an application? Why was there such a huge drop from those at the pre-application status to submitted application? And over fifty percent of the respondents say that the reason they did not submit an application was because they did not have the cash that would have been required in order to close. Hello Housing then went back and did an analysis of what the average stated and median assets were of the applicants at the pre-application stage compared to those who actually purchased. And what they found, when you're looking at the chart under the stated median assets, for the Latinx and the African-American community, their stated median assets in their application was seventy eight hundred and ten thousand, but what actually was needed when they actually had to move forward in purchasing a unit, that median asset was twenty thousand and twenty three. The median assets required for all ethnicities were somewhere around twenty thousand dollars, but when you actually go back and look at the initial pool of those who were interested in the program, their actual median assets were far less than the other racial counterparts. So that information gave us a lot of information to think about as we look at making modifications to the program to ensure that we were also not creating similar challenges for people of biopic demographics, that they had an opportunity to participate in the program. And so we use that analysis in order to further determine what changes we wanted to make. Next slide. So our proposed changes really address four different things: borrower contribution, interest rates, the maximum loan amount, front and back end ratios, and then we made an overall change to our program guidelines by integrating some of these proposed changes and coming up with a much thorough, public-facing document for the public to utilize. Next slide. So borrower contribution. Our current policy says that the maximum total loan-to-value ratio could not exceed ninety eight percent, and that borrowers' down payment assistance can come from any source of funds other than loan funds, which means that the borrower would be required to contribute that two percent. That can come from a gift, it could come from a grant, or it had to come from their own cash assets. That two percent seems like a low number, but I always want to remind people, two percent is in addition to what the borrower's required to contribute to closing cost. And when we're talking about a high-cost area, which we have here in the Bay Area, two percent of five hundred thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars. Then you have to add in the closing cost. That number can quickly rise only when you're looking at a five hundred thousand dollar. When you're looking at prices that are eight hundred thousand, close to a million, that drastically increases what somebody actually could qualify for. So again, the issue through the equity analysis, that borrowers are required to have liquid assets to cover that minimum down payment of the two percent in the closing cost. So to address that, we're recommending that the borrowers can borrow up to a hundred percent of the property's combined loan-to-value, which means through our down payment assistance loan as well as their first mortgage, those two numbers can total a hundred percent of the property's loan-to-value amount, and then that way the homebuyer is only having to contribute the seven or more percent that's required for the closing cost. They're still coming to the transaction with funding, just not as much as would have been required previously. And this is a similar modification that the county made to their down payment assistance program as well. Next slide. Interest rate. Previously, we've had a variety of interest rates over the forty-year time period. Our current interest rate policy says that the interest rate for the first time homebuyer loan is simple fixed interest, said seventy five percent of the first mortgage rate's interest, or five percent, whichever is less. So when we're in a time period where interest rates are rising and somebody has an interest rate, let's say of ten percent, seventy five percent of that is going to be the interest rate that we're going to require them to pay back on our loan. When we looked at other jurisdictions around the Bay Area, nobody has a process like that. Everybody else has a process where their interest rate for their first time homebuyer program is either zero to three percent. Ours was so drastically different. The other thing we found is that the way that our policy is written in our documents that are recorded against the property also require that if a homebuyer, when interest rates come down, wants to refinance their first mortgage, our interest rate stays the same as it was when they had their first mortgage. So there are some borrowers, through the refinancing process, end up where the first time homebuyer loan has a higher interest rate than the first mortgage that they have on their property. So with the various interest rates that are out there, the fact that our interest rate could end up being higher when a homebuyer wants to refinance in order to lesser their costs, our recommendation is that we do something similar to what's done in the market, and we have a maximum, we have a fixed interest rate for the program at three percent for our first time homebuyer loan program. Next slide. Front and back end ratios. Our current policy actually does not include a front and back end ratio requirement. When we looked at other jurisdictions, we found that that did vary. Not everybody had a front and back end ratio requirement, but there were quite a few jurisdictions that did. The importance of looking at a front and back end ratio is this: the front-end ratio is the percentage of housing expenses that a borrower is going to contribute out of their income towards housing. HUD has issued a national standard saying that people really should not be contributing more than thirty percent of their income towards housing, and anybody who's doing so is cost burdened. The front-end ratio is our guide in order to determine that. We think creating a policy that has a front-end ratio will allow us to ensure that we're providing assistance to those that need it, but that we're ensuring that we're also not putting people in an overly cost burdened situation. The other reason we find it necessary is we want to ensure that when we're providing funding, we're not providing more funding than the homebuyer needs in order to close the transaction. So if somebody comes and is trying to acquire a property, and they're able to have their first mortgage cover a large percentage of the loan, they're coming to us for assistance, but let's say that the need really is only fifty thousand dollars, we're not just going to provide them with two hundred thousand or whatever the policy is that we come up with, because that's what our policy says. We're going to go back and look and ensure that they're not being oversubsidized or provided with more financial assistance than needed to close that transaction. So we don't want to put them in a worse situation, but we also don't want to over-enrich them to where now maybe they're only contributing ten percent of their funds towards housing cost. So our recommendation is to have a minimum front-end ratio requirement of twenty eight percent for our households that are below eighty percent of AMI, and a minimum front-end ratio of thirty percent for households that are between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. The back-end ratio is a little bit different. Lenders look at the back-end ratio to assess risk. The back-end ratio includes all the debt a household has compared to their income. So we're not only looking at the housing expense, but also any credit or loans or other debt that that household has that they're going to have to pay for. Again, our current policy doesn't have a requirement. When we looked at other jurisdictions, their policies range between forty three and forty five percent of maximum back-end ratio. Our recommendation is to do a back-end ratio of forty five percent for all households. Again, to ensure that they're not taking on more debt than they can to sustain their lifestyle, and also to ensure that if there's any kind of financial change in their lifestyle, that there is enough additional funding available to help support the loan that they have on the house. Next slide. And then the last change is related to the maximum loan amount. This is one of the policy changes that we found the most confusing. Our current policy requires a homeowner to go out, get a preapproval of a loan, shop for a house, put the house under contract, and then come to the city and say, how much money can I qualify for? The city then has to use staff time in order to do three calculations to determine the maximum amount of assistance that homebuyer is eligible for. The policy that was written back in two thousand and thirteen required us to analyze what's a hundred and fifty percent of the buyer's down payment contribution, what's twenty percent of the sales price, and what's twenty percent of the maximum price from our affordable housing table. We would do those three calculations, and then the borrower, we would give the borrower a letter telling them they're eligible for the lesser of those three calculations. It's an inefficient use of staff time to do those calculations without the understanding that we're going to actually move forward with a loan. It creates buyer uncertainty because a buyer is actually putting a contract on a house without knowing whether or not they have all the funding they need in order to support that house. It potentially could delay closing because they're doing it after the homebuyer has gone under contract. That contract might require them to close in thirty days, and now they've got to determine whether or not they qualify for our program, how much money is available, go back to the lender, see if the lender's going to approve our program, go back to the homebuyer, see if you can change the dates. There are a lot of things that have to happen, so that potentially could delay closing. And we also found out that our program actually incentivizes higher-income homebuyers. If I could draw your attention to the chart on the screen, and you look at the very last column that says fifteen percent DPA, which is our down payment assistance, and the example that I have here, if a homeowner was looking to purchase a property that's three hundred and fifty two thousand four hundred dollars, and there was a fifteen percent down payment need, which means that the first mortgage company provided eighty five percent loan-to-value for the loan, so fifty two thousand is what was needed. A moderate-income homebuyer, we would run those calculations, and that moderate-income homebuyer would be eligible for a little over seventy thousand. A median-income homebuyer would only be eligible for fifty three, and a low-income homebuyer is eligible for thirty two. This process of doing this analysis incentivizes higher-income people to utilize the program because they're eligible for more money than those who are most in need. We just found it very confusing and very difficult, so this is also a policy recommendation we're making. Next slide. Our recommended policy is to actually create a two-tiered system, looking at the household's income. So for those households between eighty one and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI that are looking to purchase a studio or a one-bedroom, they would be eligible for up to a hundred thousand dollars. For those looking to purchase a two-bedroom or greater, they would be eligible up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That tiered approach is with the understanding that typically larger units that have more bedrooms are going to be more expensive. This allows us to ensure that we're providing support for those who have families and need a larger unit, but also ensuring that there is some benefit to those who are interested in purchasing studios and one-bedrooms, which we have here in Emeryville. Our second tier of the proposal is that for households that are less than eighty percent, they would be eligible for up to two hundred thousand dollars in assistance, irregardless of the number of bedrooms of the unit that they're acquiring. Now, both, all of these numbers aren't up to, so not every homebuyer is going to be able to receive the max. We still have to go back and look at their front and back-end ratio. We still have to determine what income level they're at. We have to look at the loan-to-value. There are a lot of other things that are going to determine what that actual homebuyer is up to. But now that homebuyer is at least able to go out and shop and say, I know I fall within this category, I'm looking at this unit, I know I can most likely qualify for up to a hundred thousand dollars, up to one fifty. This kind of process is something that you see in other jurisdictions. They have programs that are much more simpler, where it's a fixed dollar amount. The county has a fixed dollar amount based off of income that a household's eligible for, or it's a percentage of the purchase price. This is much easier for a homebuyer to utilize in the market to go out and find a home instead of doing the process that we previously had. Next slide. So there are other program requirements that are in our program that we are not recommending changing, and I just wanted to highlight those, because again, these guidelines were updated in two thousand and thirteen, and I believe none of our council was on council in two thousand and thirteen. So I did want to just point them out. The program still requires there to be a first-time homebuyer status. That first-time homebuyer status means that the person hasn't owned a home in the past three years as their principal place of residency in order to qualify for the program. There are exceptions. So if somebody has gone through a divorce and they previously owned a home with their spouse, they would be eligible to participate in the program, or if they owned a home that wasn't a fix. So if they owned a mobile home somewhere else and they want to purchase a home in Emeryville, they would also qualify for the program. There is still the requirement that they complete a HUD-certified homebuyer education class. That's required prior to closing on the transaction. Those classes are offered usually free of charge through a variety of nonprofit organizations. It's an eight-hour class. They go through budgeting, finance, counseling, maintenance, a variety of topics. We also still require occupancy limits. That occupancy limits really is talking about the number of people in the household in order to qualify for a unit. So we are not providing a household of one money to purchase a three- and four-bedroom house. That would be, a household of one would only be eligible to use our funding to support the purchase of a studio or a one-bedroom. We also still require our principal place of residency, which means that for the thirty year term of the loan, they are required to live in that unit as their principal residency. We do our annual monitoring of those homebuyers every single year, asking them to submit documentation in order for us to confirm that they are still residing there. Our loan terms are thirty years, which does match what you see across the Bay Area. Our loans are forgiven at the end of that thirty-year period. If somebody stays there all thirty years, that loan is forgiven. Most homebuyers, through the five hundred and sixteen, we've seen five hundred and sixty one we've had, most homebuyers end up selling their unit or paying it off over time, and we actually get those funding back, which is how we've generated nineteen million dollars, or we've issued loans for nineteen million dollars. But we generate program income through the repayment of our first-time homebuyer loans every single year, and that money can be utilized to further the program as well. We still require property insurance on the property with the city listed as an additional insured. We require the homebuyer to get a homebuyer inspection on the property, so they're very clear about any deficiencies that exist in the property. They're requiring a pest inspection. There are a variety of things that we take into consideration. The other thing I didn't mention, but when we talk about the repayment terms, repayment terms are also still the same. So we have an interest rate on our loan, but our requirement is that when somebody is selling the home or they're doing a refinancing and they have to pay it off, we require them to pay the principal plus the higher of either the interest rate or our proportional share of appreciation. We don't take both, we take the higher of the two. And you can see, when you start looking back at our loans that have paid off over the last several years, it is very cyclical. So there are times where we're getting a share of appreciation. When the market is good and prices are high, we get a share of appreciation plus a principal loan, and right now, where interest rates are high and property values are lower, we're getting our principal and our interest. So when, as the market changes, we see the change as well as the amount of additional income that's coming in to support the program. Next slide. Lastly, I mentioned before that we're also changing our program guidelines. Our current program guidelines, it's about an eight-page document deep on our website. We recognize that it's really just not user-friendly. So we've come up with program guidelines. It's now about a thirty-page document, and it really outlines everything that the homebuyer needs to be aware of, lenders, realtors, anybody who's interested in the program. There's a document that they'll be able to actually utilize in order to understand the program. It talks about definition of terms throughout the document. What are all the applicant eligibility requirements? What are the loan terms? What are the requirements for the first mortgage loan? If somebody wants to refinance, or if they need to do a short sale, what are our requirements for that? If somebody has to take a sabbatical or has to leave their home and needs to do an older occupancy waiver, what are the requirements related to that? What are the other general requirements? A lot of this information, we've always done, it's just never been written down. So we wanted to create a public-facing document that can be utilized not only to market the program, but so that everybody is a hundred percent clear about what the requirements are to participate in the program. Next slide. So today, what we are asking is for the city council to adopt the resolution allowing or approving the revised program guidelines for the first time homebuyer loan program. I did want to say that in the resolution, we also state that we want to do a reevaluation of the program guidelines within a year, one, so that we can ensure that the program guidelines is actually meeting what we want it to do, and the program is being utilized in the market. But we also want to be able to report back to council if there are things that we need to do different to modify the program, to make it easier for buyers, for lenders to participate. We want to come back to you with those recommendations in a year so that we can make sure that the program is efficient and is being utilized to the best of its ability. So with that, I'm available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Valerie. Any clarifying questions before our call for public comment members?
I have one. Valerie, excellent presentation. Thank you. The slide you had up where you went over the front-end ratio, and you were talking about people who are at eighty percent AMI, the twenty eight percent minimum of their, the ratio on their income versus the amount of the property. How did you, how did you back into twenty eight percent on that?
So thirty percent is what the usual standard is, and if we only went to thirty, we're really not ensuring that we're creating wiggle room. When we're talking about especially our very low-income households whose incomes are already restricted, any ability we can to ensure that they're put in a better situation. So when the HOA fees go up or there's damage to something on the property, that's how we got to the twenty eight percent, and then also through looking through other jurisdictions. Other jurisdictions we saw in the Bay Area had that front-end ratio ranging from twenty five up to thirty three percent. We didn't want to go as low as twenty five. We thought twenty eight was a good median to ensure that there is that little bit of extra wiggle room for them, but we're not providing them with so much money that they're, they're getting a bonus off of the public's back. but we're not providing them with so much money that they're, they're getting a bonus off of the public's back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members with clarifying questions for our call for public comment? All right. At this time, I'll call for a public comment on item twelve point one. Any member of the public that would like to comment on item twelve point one can do so now for three minutes.
I have to say, that was an excellent presentation. I have one, one question. I sir, I'm Fran Quartel. I serve on the Budget Advisory Committee. Is this program self-funding? Or is there some impact on the city, either the general fund or some other fund from the changes that you're proposing, if you know?
Oh, are you done with your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Valerie, if you'd like to come address the comment?
Absolutely. So through our Measure C Housing Bond, there was a fifty-million-dollar housing bond. There's one point nine five million dollars allocated to support this program. Additionally, as we generate additional revenue through the repayment of loans, through additional housing impact fees, through other resources, that money can come back in to continue to fund the program. So there is not a general fund obligation specifically related to this program. It is being funded through the Measure C Housing Bond that's designated only for housing initiatives.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to comment on the item? Let me, just let me close it out. Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn it back to you for deliberation. Vice Mayor, did you have a question or a comment?
I think just on the, just one comment on the self-funding aspect. So the money is allocated within the housing bond, which the city is paying five to six percent interest on that money. But we're charging three percent to the homeowners. So it is overall a subsidy in that sense, but it does have a lot of potential to bring benefit to the city. But I just wanted to set the record straight and if there's anything you want to add to that, Valerie, please do.
No, thank you. No, yes, there is interest on the bond, there is interest on the bonds that the city is paying. I would say in, since I've been with the city since two thousand and nineteen, all of the loan programs that we've issued all have a three percent interest rate. But I think your point is well-taken and maybe that again is something if the council wants to consider that or something we look at again in a year's time, whether or not we need to increase that. But the recommendation from the Housing Committee was to stick with the three percent, which is what we're finding. In other jurisdictions, it's either zero or three.
Any other, oh sorry, any other comments or questions? Member Bowers?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask, the one point nine five million that's in the housing bond, did we replace the two million that we had allocated of unassigned general fund that was used to, as a rotating fund on houses in foreclosure, or is that a separate pot of money?
It's a separate pot of money.
So we have two two-million-dollar allocations essentially. There, one's, one is not in the housing bond.
It's not two million for the other program, so there is funding dedicated to the purchase of existing portfolio within the city. If that's going through foreclosure or homeowners unable to sell, I don't know that it's two million dollars. I think it's a little bit less than that. But it is a separate pool of money that's available to support that initiative separate from this program.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments from members? Member Pryforce?
Hi Valerie, great presentation as always. I think, when I first, you know, got on this road of becoming a council member, I, I spoke a whole lot about programs like Fair of Action and DEI because, you know, coming out of tech space, I saw some effectiveness with those programs, initiatives. Now being in the seat and being in politics for long enough and getting into the conversations, that has now evolved into conversations around reparations. And that looking at, particularly with the California Task Force that looked at reparations, home buying was a very important component because that is still one of the leading causes of black wealth creation in this country. Especially when you look at some of the things happening, I believe, in states like Michigan and others where, where black homeowners have seen a lot of value and, and that wealth generation happening. You know, reparations is, it's not just, and I shared with that with you earlier, it's not just, hey, something bad happened, let's fix it, right? Reparations is, something bad happened, let's fix it and let's actually understand what happened and see if we can heal the harm that was caused by that bad happening. And if we had a school program that fed children, hungry children, and we said, and this program has served X amount of children and then in two thousand and thirteen, we served one kid for a little over a decade, then, and then we say, okay, now time to feed kids, right? Let's change the program. Reparation says, well, wait, why weren't we feeding kids in the first place? Like what, what happened there? What happened in two thousand and thirteen? And, and so that's why I'm a little reluctant to, to vote yes on this is because I, I, I don't have enough information in front of me to make a, an assessment of what were the barriers that were created in two thousand and thirteen. So it sounds like there was a pot of money that went away because of redevelopment and, and then the council members at that time agreed to creating barriers that, that prevented people from truly being able to participate in this program, particularly black and brown folk. I mean, they weren't targeting black and brown folk, but, you know, as I think Al Sharpton said, when black Ameri, when white America catches a cold, black America gets pneumonia. I believe that's what he said. I could be misquoting him. And so the levels of inequity that are deeply embedded, and I, and thank you for the last slide that mentioned some of the program requirements that should stay. But especially the question around the front-end ratio, back-end ratio, which can sometimes be a quality control, but can also be too great of a poverty test that could, it could create another barrier. And, but I don't know that because I need to really do a deep dive into the barriers. The other thing is, you know, I'm not a housing expert. As many times as people ask me to speak about housing, I'm new to the block. I know what my experience is and, and I represent a body of folks who, who feel that renting in Emeryville, that they're being treated as an underclass. And so that's why I got into this fight. Because I'm not an expert, I'd prefer to rely on experts. And, and as much as I can talk about a whole bunch of things that I am an expert on, politicians, you know, elected officials love to tout that they're experts when there are greater bodies of scholars and activists and people who've been doing this work. I'd like to see a partnership of some sort between, and I believe that, I've spoken to Chad about it as it relates to our BIPOC programming when it comes to small businesses, that we are able to connect with an expert agency to figure out what were those barriers and what, are we sure that how we're proceeding, how we, how we are proceeding can really uproot some of those things and maybe add some, maybe have some other ideas because they're a think tank or they have a pool of information. They have other data that they can tap into, that we would benefit from, that can help guide us to making sure that, that this, this, that this action item before us truly is going to make a difference, that in a year from now, we can make an assessment and that, and that sort of. But at this point, it is very difficult for me to agree because I just don't have enough information. In terms, in terms of voting yes, I don't have enough information in front of me to make sure that we are actually doing something because I don't want to vote something in that come to find out a year from now, yeah, council member, yeah, that actually created a barrier or it didn't actually remove some of the barriers that are there. And then we go from, you know, one person to two people, right? And then it's like, oh wait, what? And, and so I don't want to go on record of supporting something without the, the right information in front of me. And hopefully that information points to something that looks like reparations.
Oh, yes, I just wanted to thank you again for doing the, the deep dive into the program, finding out why it was underutilized and also looking to see that it, tweaking it to, to help the people we want to help. And with the recognition that it was perhaps maybe wealthier, people who were taking advantage previously, but now we want to adjust the program to help people with more financial need. And to member Pryforce's point, more black and brown minority members of the community. So I think it was a very thoughtful assessment that was done, reducing the upfront amounts of money that are needed to, to get a new home. So I, I do think the program really does, is tailor-made to address the points that member Pryforce is making. So I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the changes to the guidelines.
Thank you Mayor. Valerie, thanks for the great presentation. I appreciate the fact that we can revisit this program within a year or so to see whether or not it's effective. I do understand that with just one percent availing of it in the last ten years, there is a need for change and an update to this program. And I am grateful that the other jurisdictions were assessed to see what was working for them and we are trying to make our program comparable to that. And I am somewhat heartened to see this update or change that we are making in recognition of the fact that not enough people are availing of it. And I hope that this change will be a positive change in terms of having the BIPOC communities or the ones that are more financially strained. It will help them avail of it much more. Thanks.
Member Bowers?
Thank you. I just want to thank you Valerie for being the expert, for being the person who provides us with that expert guidance. And you have been a tremendous asset to the city for the past five years that you've been here and your work on the expenditure plan, your work on the housing element. It is, it is second to none. The city's reputation exists because of your guidance, your advice and your steer vision, your clear vision towards what it is we're trying to do here. So I'm really grateful for this presentation, the report, and the presentation were extremely comprehensive. I thank you for that. I want to thank the Housing Committee as well for, for working on this. I think one of the things that doesn't get done in many cities is take the opportunity to issue spot where we could improve. We kind of have a, you know, a space where we're recognized for our housing production. This past week, we were recognized for all the work we're doing to grow housing, the creative programs that you helped develop for the housing element that are going to really set us apart. Everything from converting parking garages in the future into housing opportunities, looking at the future of the city in a long-term sense, those are all, not just technical expertise and wisdom, it's also strategic on your part. And it's with your partnership with Chad and others in the Community Development Department, really something that's benefited us. I'm reminded of two thousand and fourteen, I was the statewide policy director at Housing California and my board was comprised of people who both did affordable housing development, but also people who were looking for ways to make home ownership opportunities more available and accessible to people. And programs like this that were generated during the redevelopment era really were a novel thing for their time, right? And as you noted, I think early in your presentation, a lot has changed about the way the housing market works, the situation and the circumstances socially in the environment that have changed how people and which people can access housing equitably. And you've, I think, laid the groundwork for why it hasn't. And I remember in two thousand and fourteen, I worked on Proposition Forty-One, which was at that time the Affordable Housing Bond to repurpose the old Calvet Farm and Home Program, which had been a loan program created after World War Two, designed to give returning veterans first-time home buyer opportunities to either purchase homes or purchase farms and come and return and have their place in the American economy. And it had in it a whole bunch of things very similar to this in that program. But as time passed, fewer and fewer and fewer people utilized that program. And there had been, there had been an investment of funds by the state over a period of years with the goal being, maybe we should put more money into it and more people will use it. Similar to kind of what we did with our housing bond. I'm, I'm tracking the parallels here. And the reality was people weren't using it more because the program terms didn't reflect what the modern home buyer wanted to do. It didn't reflect what a veteran's experience was returning from war and they were actually getting loans faster and at cheaper rates than what the state program was. And so at that time, the state's decision with Prop Forty-One was to repurpose the Calvet Farm and Low Loan Program and turn it into bond money that could be used to build affordable housing for veterans in larger rental housing capacity because there just simply wasn't that utilization rate and leave a smaller portion of that money available for the home buyer program. And so what I see us doing here today is responding to the change in circumstances. I see what you've proposed to us as something that's extremely responsible. It offers an opportunity for us to stop talking about homeownership, to stop talking about equitable access for people in communities of color and actually give them a meaningful path forward. So I thank you for that and I will second the motion to approve this item.
Member Pryforce?
So I, I want to make sure that there's something very clear around this conversation of reparations. So first, this question of BIPOC. So this is no longer a BIPOC conversation because BIPOC is inclusive of communities like Asians, right? And this is a black and brown conversation. This is a black and brown that there are inequities that are in our system. And, and I do want to recognize, you know, your amazingness Valerie of being a housing expert. But I believe that we, as a city that is surrounded by other cities that have race and equity committees, we do not have a race and equity committee in the city of Emeryville. And thus, and thus, a lot of people in Emeryville feel that Emeryville has a race, equity and class issue. That prior to Costa Hawkins, we could have passed our own rent control. We did not. That there are still, as a BMR resident of Emeryville, tenant protections that we could have passed in Emeryville. We did not. And so because we don't look at, historically in Emeryville, at our issues through a race, equity and class lens, then that is what I'm inviting. I'm inviting us to, since we did do harm, right? It's the recognition that we did do harm in two thousand and thirteen when it came to the home buying program, right? I wasn't around, no one here is around, you weren't around, so no one needs to take personal offense to that. But what I do, am concerned about is the culture of how we assess and how, how do we, how do we heal? How do we make these, these repairs? And, and my suggestion is that, that we bring in race, equity and class experts. Like there are organizations, think tanks that do that. They advise cities on these particular. They advise cities on these particular issues. And I think that that is, that would greatly benefit how we move forward with this. And so I understand the intent, but that's the history of, especially looking at things from a reparations lens, a lot of intent, but a lot of harm coming from that intent. And I don't want to exasperate the harm that we already have done by agreeing to something that hasn't had the proper assessment or what I feel, excuse me, I won't say proper assessment, I will say the most informed assessment by those who do look at race, equity and class. And so that's my position.
Anyone else?
Well, Valerie, I just want to echo the sentiments of thanking you. One of the things that I enjoy most about being a council member here is the accessibility of the staff and the offer to meet with all of the council members and actually provide them this information prior to this meeting. So if there were any concerns or issues, you could hear that feedback directly. So I thank you for that. What I remember most about the meeting, when you mentioned in the beginning that you actually saw the issues and saw how just more difficult and convoluted this process had to be. And because with your experience working in housing and community development departments, your wealth of wisdom of programming that you were able to bring to our city, you were able to easily identify that this was not functioning the way it needed to and it needed reassessment and that you actually consulted with consultants that we have on not just our program, but looking at different programs that had better outcomes around black and brown homeownership and how to adjust those, the programming barriers and make it not just an equivalent or equal to what is going on in other municipalities, but something that really speaks to the values of Emeryville. And so I thank you so much for that. And Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Thank you very much. Item 12.2, proposed 2024 state legislative agenda. We have Nicola here from Towns and Public Affairs. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, vice mayor, councilmember, city staff, Nicola DeLuca here from Towns and Public Affairs. I'm going to do a, and thank you very much for having the PowerPoint up. I'm just going to go over kind of some of our recent activity, where things stand right now in Sacramento, talk a little bit about DC. And I've got a handful of bills that we're recommending the city support. And when we get to that portion, I'm happy to kind of explain the thought process behind that. So again, appreciate you all for your time and support. As you know, our team represents the city in both Sacramento and Washington DC. We've had a great run with you all and we're very, very grateful. So if we go to this second slide, kind of it's a quick overview, it's going to be of our past work, then a state legislative overview, identified and recommended priority legislation, then of course, questions. Next slide, please. So long story short, you all know, our firm primarily represents municipalities, really, really proud of our work in Sacramento and DC and that we've secured over $3 billion in public sector funding for our clients. Next slide, so you're like, so what have you done for Emeryville? Well, almost $11 million and I cannot wait till we get that up to $13 million so we could brag and say it's $1,000 per resident, working really closely with city staff on a lot of different grant applications, but also really proud of the partnerships we've had over the years. Councilmember Bouders, you've been one of the great partners on the legislation we've gotten signed into law, from increasing your sales tax cap to doing the TAY project with EH for the affordable housing. So just kind of a quick little background. Next slide, please. So state strategy, it's worked really well over the years, just being really tailored and specific and targeted. Right now, I think we've got 2,700 bills in the state legislature. Sure as heck not going to recommend support for all those bills, some of them don't really even impact us. So being very clear on our identified priority bills, coordinating closely with you all for your position, of course, city staff on the legislation that we're going to be pushing forward and of course, ongoing weekly updates that we provide and just really effective and focused advocacy efforts. So one of the things I do want to talk about when we get into the bills, one of the things that we like to do, we've been spoiled with having great representation, Assemblywoman Bonta, Senator Skinner, then Assemblywoman Wicks. One of the things we like to do is check in with their offices and say, hey, on behalf of the city of Emeryville, what are some of the bills you'd like us to take a position on? That's going to kind of back up the 10 pieces of legislation we'll be recommending. Next slide, please. So recent efforts, beginning of the year, we submitted a request or a delegation for state budget funding. Friday, more than likely is the governor's may revise. It's no secret that the state budget isn't looking great. We've heard it could be up to a $40 billion deficit. Just a couple of years ago, we were having a massive surplus, though we still submitted a request and we're still checking in with offices because you never know, even though there is a deficit, as my grandmother would tell me, a closed mouth doesn't get fed. So we did submit a state funding request, fast forwarding to our friends in DC. We just recently submitted a federal request to Congresswoman Lee and our two senators for community project funding. Really want to thank the city manager and his team. We submitted it for 40th Street, Phase Two. And so we'll probably know the next two weeks where that stands, meaning if Congresswoman Lee or our senators are pushing that forward. So excited about that. You all have taken some formal positions on some legislation, so we've been able to chime in and help push those forward. We'll have additional measures to talk about today and then the ongoing weekly updates. Next slide, please. So here's what it looks like in Sacramento. Just two weeks ago, the House of Origin Policy Committee deadline passed, meaning every bill in order to move forward has to get out of its policy committee. And then everything's kind of been on hold now that you've got out of policy committee. We're waiting for the may revise to come and that's going to start a lot of discussions on the budget. As I mentioned, more than likely, that's going to be Friday. May 17th is a huge cutoff date. That's the Appropriations Committee deadline. That's when bills with a fiscal impact can either be held in a committee, meaning they don't move forward, or they move forward. Hence, one of the reasons why we're before you today is we'd like to weigh in on certain bills before it gets heard in the Appropriations Committee. June 15th, based on the constitution of a budget bill must be passed. As you all know from past years, that could be a framework and then that rolls into various budget junior bills. And then July 3rd is the last day for policy committees to meet and report bills. Then they go on recess for a month and then August is the last month of session. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to get into the nitty gritty of every single bill, but these are the recommended pieces of legislation we're suggesting the city takes a position on. The logistics would be if you say yes, then I will work with the city clerk and the city manager and the mayor to sign letters that we will then submit and share widely. AB 2020 from Assemblywoman Bonta, that's a priority bill for her. She's really working hard and she has been working hard on addressing human trafficking and supporting the survivors. So this is one of her priority pieces of legislation. When I checked in with their office, based on actually the location of San Pablo and and a past history, they said this would be something that'd be great for the city to support. The next bill is AB 2013. It's the cleanup of the Assemblywoman Aguirre Curry's legislation from last session, ACA I, which the city supported. That gives you all greater authority to have voter-approved initiatives and infrastructure bonds for affordable housing, streets, roads, parks. And then what I was going to do is just present all of them and then take your questions. Next slide, please. The next two bills, working backwards, SB 1046 from Senator John Laird, one of my favorite legislators, checked in with his office. It's really about how giving cities faster ability to streamline the composting requirements that you're supposed to do based on past legislation. That's something they asked us to support. SB 905 from Senator Weiner, that's his effort on reducing vehicle break-ins and closing a loophole. Next slide, please. Another one from Senator Weiner, SB 1031. Councilmember Bouders, you know a lot about this based on ACTC. This is going to go through different iterations. The thought process behind us supporting SB 1031 is multiple reasons why. Number one, we've always weighed in on transportation-related legislation that impacts the nine-barrier counties, certainly based on the location of the city, by the Bay Bridge being a major transportation hub. That's part of it. The other part is we know this will be amended. The ability to support a bill now, knowing it's going to be amended, gives us a better seat at the table and gives us a better opportunity to weigh in with comments and suggestions. The other bill is SB 1060. That's from Senator Becker. He is trying to address some of the insurance problems we've heard about lately about houses not getting homeowner insurance due to their being in a high fire zone. We sat down with him about two weeks ago. This is one of his priority bills. He knows he's got a fight on his hand, but he's, whether it's farmers or Allstate or who have you, the insurance crisis is really impacting this state and this is his effort to make sure that insurers who have the risk model for underwriting, there's a lot of things that they have to keep in mind in order to make sure homes are supported for insurance. So this bill would make it easier for homeowners to keep their insurance. Next slide, please. SB 1144, Senator Skinner, this is a big one for her. This is a way to ensure stolen goods are not sold online. It's a way to audit some of these online websites that, making sure that they are not selling stolen goods. It's part of her effort to address retail theft, big priority for her. The next bill, AB 2346 from Assemblymember Lee, organic waste. This also gives cities greater tools to meet the state's organic waste procurement requirements. And so it's trying to give you guys greater flexibility. And then next slide, please. The last few, Assemblymember Wicks has AB 2808, which prohibits certain entertainment venue operators from entering into an exclusive contract with a primary ticket seller. Basically, every time you go to Ticketmaster, you pay some of those insane surcharges. That's what they're trying to address. And then three really important pieces of legislation that are going to be highly contested over the next few weeks. AB 1657 from Assemblywoman Wicks, her housing bond. AB 1567 from Assemblymember Garcia, his version of the climate bond. And then SB 867, Senator Allen, his version of the climate bond. Thought process is threefold. For the housing bond, there's a lot of great programs the city would benefit from. This is going to be the past bonds, those funds are running out, the state is really losing it. They don't have too many more funding programs to address affordable housing, as in bricks and mortar. Assemblywoman Wicks's bill gives a big infusion to a lot of those programs. The climate bond, both Garcia and Allen, but primarily Garcia, there's a lot of great programs for the city. Past programs that we've applied for funding to that we've been successful, a lot of those are in Garcia's bond, whether it's for land conservation, bay trails, new parks, things of that nature, that's in the climate bond. And then Senator Allen's bill also, his climate bond has similar proposals and similar pockets, buckets of funding that the city has and can benefit from in the future. The thought behind supporting both climate bonds is really to kind of hedge our bets and make sure both authors know and our delegation know that a lot of these funding sources are very important to us. So with that said, happy to answer any questions. I am aware that there have been some questions about utility price hikes, so hearing from the council, also happy to, if you all suggest, we can, something that I can do is draft a letter to our delegation, weighing in on some of our concerns about some of the price hikes and what we'd like to see happen. There was a bill on this from Assemblywoman Friedman, it got put on hold. And from our information, there are some discussions right now going on with leadership and consumer protection groups and others as to what a fix could look like. So it'd be good if we do weigh in and kind of voice our concerns and recommendations. Threw a lot at you, happy to answer any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, any clarifying questions for our call for public comment? Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you for the overview. And on that last note regarding utility rates, I know you were looking for items, you know, specific to Emeryville, but obviously that affects everybody living here. And if you're going to be reaching out for, I think maybe as most people know or feel, we, in the Northern California area, we pay probably the highest or among the highest, if not the highest, electricity rates per kilowatt hour in the country. And I know there's many-fold explanations for that, but fundamentally, it seems like there's a lot of, we have one supplier here, PG&E. We have a lot of obstacles to transmission line permitting that would help bring online new supply, new competition, which then would fundamentally help lower rates in a sustainable way. So my preference would be for focusing on transmission line permitting, but then also looking at the overall, I'm not sure how to fix PG&E, but I'm very troubled by the role that they play as this quasi-private enterprise that has virtually, essentially a de facto monopoly. And I'm not sure if there's a more radical bill that, or something to modify the arrangement that we have with utilities in California. And certainly the, but I do feel like just capping rates the way we do with the CPUC is not a sustainable approach because clearly there are deep-seated problems with the infrastructure, decades of mismanagement. And I'm not sure that we're going to be able to fix that just by telling people they can't raise rates. But hopefully we can bring on more supply. So my preference is definitely to focus on just if there's any way to bring competition to what's supposed to be a competitive industry. And I'd be interested to know if there's support from the council for that angle in particular, the transmission line permitting, whether that's streamlining with the CPUC approvals, not requiring a demonstrated need is something that new projects need to do. And then also maybe expedited environmental analysis, right? Which can often drag on for years and is often brought in bad faith to hold up projects that would have good for the people and for the environment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other clarifying questions before our call for public comment? No? Okay. Now's the time for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on item 12, not items, item 12.2 can do so now for three minutes?
Here I am.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Let's see. So this is very important to me, not just for our city, but really for anybody who lives in our state and maybe even in our country. And the motivation for my coming here is I really feel quite strongly that various elements of leadership in our state have not stayed ahead of issues that are important to everybody who lives here. And I want to make sure that our population of almost 13,000 people have an opportunity to give the council and the lobbyists input. So I'm just going to say, my name is Fran Quatell. I've lived in Emeryville for most of my adult life and for about the past 10 years, I've served on the Budget Advisory Committee. Over 10 years ago, I was instrumental in spearheading a successful effort that wound up adding an amendment to the Dodd-Frank Financial Reform Bill. I don't know if you're aware that I was responsible for restoring, not single-handedly, but importantly, $270 million to 9,500 bank depositors. I would like to find a way for I would like to find a way for our lobbyists to receive collective input from our citizens on three intertwined issues. The first concerns PG&E's increasing electricity rates, hazard reduction progress, and other PG&E issues, including executive compensation. Two, insurers are leaving the state and/or returning with ever-increasing premiums and potentially lower coverage. That has to be addressed by the Department of Insurance. Three, the need for the California Fair Plan, the insurer of last result, to provide improved levels of customer service. I think you might be aware that the entity is now adding 1,000 new customers a day, and the public, which includes us, would appreciate an actually receiving a customer service experience that matches these increased responsibilities and service level needs. The California Insurance Commissioner is working on changes that he is planning on implementing by year-end, and I really want to see input gathered from our city that is funneled to that commissioner and these other agencies that are really important for our future. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comment, Fran. Any other member of the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn to you for deliberation. Nicolau, if you could come on back if there's any questions. To our previous commenter's question around being able to provide feedback to you, what would you recommend for interested members of the public?
Great question. Probably want to think about that one. I mean, obviously, working with the city manager and the city team, probably a couple high-level points on behalf of the residents of Emeryville. I think some of the feedback from the vice mayor about transmission lines, things of that, I think are helpful. They've definitely heard the issue about cost. I mean, that's kind of really what's been driving this discussion, and suddenly they get this bill and it's, you know, 300% more. Maybe, let me think and get back to you guys on that, because on one hand, we want to be effective and quick. On the other hand, we want to make sure we get everyone's input. So what I'm kind of thinking off the top of my head is maybe within the next two weeks, get some feedback, put it into a letter, work with the city team, send it to you to sign it, and then get that off there.
Sounds good.
The one other thing I do want to highlight is, the Appropriations Committee in each House is a massive checkpoint. After this checkpoint, there's still going to be some other bills that we're going to want to be active on. We can either come back here or work with the city team on a couple other bills that have either sprung to life, or maybe some that have been amended that we don't like. So this isn't just a one-time discussion. This will be sort of an iterative process.
Thank you. Members, any other additional comments or questions? Vice Mayor Moore.
I just had another question on, this is on the topic of the insurers, and I know we have one bill, SB 1060, asking the insurance underwriting to consider risk models. And this made me curious, why are we not considering risk models? In fact, that's possibly why we're losing insurers. And what other things are we perhaps not considering, just looking ahead a little bit? So maybe this is an example of an area where some deregulation in terms of telling insurers what they cannot do could actually help us get more insurers to the market.
Absolutely. My understanding on that is, they have been considering some risk models where they're pretty weak, and it was really not of much substance or really be able to make much change. So Senator Becker has been really trying to meet his head on and say, in order to make sure houses are protected, and these are the steps that the homeowners need to take, you all need to consider that. His bill's also going to change a bit, so it's something that I'd like us to weigh in on, but also be part of that coalition that moves, pushing forward this and then others. I do expect there to be a handful of newer bills that get amended on the topic of insurance. And also, if you want, Vice Mayor, I'm happy to get, work with our team to get you more information as to the history of risk models and the different legislative attempts over the years.
That would be helpful. I think that's what I was asking, which is, yeah, why would we require risk models? Surely, the insurers want to be considering risk models, and I assume their, you know, their business, and their entire business model really depends on risk models. So definitely, let's support risk models, but also, Member Bowthers, did you have input?
Yeah. I got to recognize.
Yes. So, yes, any additional background on that, but definitely, it seems like a move in the right direction.
Do you also recall, because it was a little salacious, the story about like a lobbyist was on an airplane, was on a cell phone call, and behind him was a consumer advocate lobbyist, remember that? There was a bill last year, like the very end of session, like two weeks left before session, was about to end, which is kind of when things can happen really, really quick, that was seeking to make some changes to what the insurance companies can and cannot do. And that was shelved, which then also led to, as the nice woman mentioned, the Insurance Commissioner saying, but at the end of this year, there'd be a handful of recommendations he wants to put forward. So this has been an issue that's kind of popped up and gone away, but if you read the news each day, I mean apartments are losing coverage, so clearly something needs to happen right away. It's not just a fire issue, it's a statewide issue.
All right. Member Bowthers?
Thanks for being here, Nicolau, and for recommending action on these items. I'm supportive of the recommended support item on all of them, but I wanted to talk about two of them. First one was the insurance one, Senate Bill 1060. I think just as additional context on that item, right now, the Insurance Commissioner does not allow insurers to consider models that consider future climate impacts. So they can't look at the models that show certain zones are going to have accelerated climate change around them, where there would be increased fire hazards, increased earthquake risk, or increased sea level rise. They're not allowed to use certain models, and that's a reason why they're pulling out, because they're only allowed to use current and past data, and it doesn't allow them to forecast everything they want, and the models that are allowed are very limited or weak. And that's why it's created a lot of risk in the underwriting and in the reinsurance space. So there is some political gameship between the Insurance Commissioner and the insurance companies, who basically called his bluff and began pulling out and not doing new policies. And there are supposedly going to be new proposals coming from the Insurance Commissioner, Ricardo Lara, by the end of the year on some of these items. My preference would be to take no position on this one personally. That's me, but that's simply because I do think this bill will change significantly, and I don't know that it's a complete reflection of what can or would be considered, and I don't think there's any harm in looking at it after appropriations to see what the political changes are to it, because there will be a lot of political changes on that bill, I imagine. The second one is Senate Bill 1031, and this was noted, yes, Alameda County Transportation Commission is very engaged in the conversation about the regional ballot measure for transit funding proposed to take place in 2026. Right now, the bill is just kind of a shell of a bill. It does not contain things about return to source to ensure that funds generated or raised in certain counties go back in some proportion to those home counties to fund transit operations in those counties. It does not contain a balance as between what operations will be funded or how it will be divided between operators. There have been typically in these regional measures in the past, kind of a little bit of pork, in the sense that there's like specific projects that get named as ways of getting certain legislators to sign on to the bill, so the money goes to a specific thing in somebody's preferred city. We at the Alameda County Transportation Commission have taken no position on it, and we did that on purpose, because we didn't know what was going to come out of the bill, and we didn't want our name on a bill that was essentially still empty. We've verbally committed our support to solving the transit crisis, and I would support instead a letter from the mayor on behalf of the council, supporting action by the legislature to address the Bay Area's transit funding crisis and support Senators Weiner and Wahab in their effort to move people together towards that solution. But I would not personally recommend taking a position on a bill for which the content of what the ballot measure would read, the type of tax or taxes it would impose, and how that money would be allocated or returned to source is not presently in the bill. Those are my comments.
Any additional comments or questions? Number four.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to defer the position on 1060 at this time until it has been vetted out by the appropriations. I do feel there'll be significant changes, and I hope really positive ones, for the insurers here, especially when it comes to home, people who own homes and apartments. With regard to, I do also want to thank you. You always come up with great recommendations, so thank you so much for doing that. And with regard to getting feedback from the community, I would love to hear some of the things that you may come up with, because I think that would be very valuable in supporting some of these bills when it's time to do that. So perhaps we can start early in the year and maybe do a presentation, I'm thinking earlier in the year, as to what's going on, so that there is more community input. And of course, I'm sure there'll be a lot from you that is going to be valuable information that you can help with in that regard. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I just had one more comment on 1060, and I appreciate the additional background, Member Bowthers. It's helpful to know where that comes from. I do think, though, even if this bill is going to change, it seems like a good step in the right direction, and I would imagine it's helpful to indicate support when something is going in that direction. Correct me if I'm mistaken, so for that reason, I would like to still propose that we support that.
If I may, through the mayor, to support, formal support's a letter from the city, a letter or resolution. Over the years, you all have also given me direction. I can go verbally talk to an office, hey, we have the City of Emeryville, SB 1060, we like where you're going, little concerned what might happen in appropriations, we want to get there, what can you tell us? So what are you thinking? Are you in discussions for amendments? The trick is that some of you know, once you come to an office and say you want to work with them or you want to be supportive, there's more information shared, there's more of a partnership. And so if you all want, and I want to get ahead of some of the other recommendations, but on 1060, I'm happy to, Mark, to go into the office and say, the Emeryville City Council discussed it, we like where it's heading, we do have some concerns, X, Y, and Z. Can you share with us what you're hearing from your Appropriations Committee, or what amendments you might be taking? And then work together on either waiting till after appropriations, or now to start drafting a letter expressing support. That could be one alternative.
Would that level of support be acceptable to the members?
Members? Okay, we haven't shaken heads, no.
So it looks like no.
We could also wait till after appropriations. I mean, many of our ways is going to cut.
Yeah, what I would recommend in this type of space is authorize Nicolau to express our interest in supporting the bill verbally, so we don't take a position. So if you were to look at the bill analysis right now, the support on this bill is from the counties of California, the association, a couple individual counties, the City of Berkeley, and then a number of just a handful of like fire protection districts in the mountains. And then it's opposed by all of the insurance associations, the Federation of Personal Insurance, the National Association of Mutual Insurance Companies. So this, the dynamic there is, unfortunately, the way politics works in the Appropriations Committee, those stakeholders are going to be very well-financed, and they're going to be very loud in the conversation at the committee, and I just think we should give the bill time to see what it's more likely going to look like before we put our name on paper. So I would support expressing verbal support without taking a position on the bill.
That's what I had in mind.
Cool.
It works. Is there support for that, though?
I'm fine, I'm comfortable with that, and I feel like that is a good path forward.
Okay. Member Pryforce, did you have any objections to that?
Sorry, I raised, thank you, Madam Mayor, I raised my hand to share comments, but in terms of a response to Vice Mayor Moore's stance on this particular bill, is that what you're asking me?
Yes, if you're comfortable with just us expressing as a city.
Verbal.
Verbally, with working alongside Senator Becker's office.
No, ma'am, I actually take no position. There's not enough information about this bill. And, yeah, there's several bills here that I actually don't agree with, but that particular one, I am, yeah, taking no position. So, you know, to the majority.
You said you had raised your hand, did you have?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So to resident citizen Fran's point, so thank you for your comments, and for the comments from anyone. And so I'm addressing the city at large, all of you out there, that it's difficult in this process of government where for our lobbyist, that no one pulls him to the side, like on a bus, and say, hey, you know, could you work on this and work on that, right? There has to be a level of tiered accessibility, accountability, that's really important. That's why he mentioned the city manager and us and that sort of thing. And that's why it's so important that you understand that our seats are your seats, and that if there's any position that you want us to take, express that to us, because more so than anything, we should be embodying Emeryville's values, from everything to climate, to housing, to the rights of people and individuals. And so it's really important that you engage with us, so that you don't look at a bill eventually, and just was mentioned that City of Berkeley was supporting the previously mentioned bill, that you see City of Emeryville supporting a bill that you feel conflicts with your values. And I think that that's really important during the conversation around the license plate reader technology. I made sure to reach out to Emeryville residents who had issues around surveillance and privacy and the technology itself, and I invited them to also speak to us about that, because it's really important that, as we're sharing with our lobbyists, what we feel is important, that what we feel is important isn't just what is important to Councilmember Pryforce or Vice Mayor Moore, or, you know, that it's important to you, and that we reflect what you want to see happen in our relationship with Sacramento and DC. So that's what I wanted to share.
Nicolau, I just want to thank you for all of your work. To note, this is why we have the legislative agenda as an action item in a public meeting, because we want to hear from our residents, we want to hear public comment, we want to receive the written comments on the potential legislative priorities and agenda that the council, and then therefore the city, would support. So we continue to welcome that discussion and those comments from the residents that we represent. And again, that is why we do this in a public meeting, that this isn't a private conversation between, say, the mayor and the city manager. It is done in a public meeting where people can come and express their opinions on the bills being presented for support. Do we, well, Fran, at this time, the time for public comment has closed, I apologize. But please do stay if you want to stay and talk to us afterwards, thank you. This is an action item.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve formal positions of support and authorize towns and public affairs, city manager and the mayor to submit letters of support for everything attached to this item as Exhibit A with two exceptions. For Senate Bill 1060, rather than written formal support on record, that we authorize towns and public affairs to speak to the author's office, express our interest in the bill, and follow the bill through the Appropriations Committee to learn more about where it will go, and that we take no position on this time on Senate Bill 1031, but that it come back before this body, after it has adopted. come back before this body, after it has adopted amendments.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowthers?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
I have comments, so.
Okay, it's a vote, it's a roll.
No, actually, you can't make, you can't make comments during voting, you can't.
We called, we called the question.
Yes.
We called the question.
Yes.
We called the question, and we're doing the roll call.
Yes.
So we need, we need your vote.
Yes, so, yeah, so.
We need your vote, Mr. City Attorney.
So, yeah, I can make, I can make comments during voting, yes.
Mr. City Attorney, is that correct? Just, we can just clarify.
Once the period for Councilmember comments is closed, the only appropriate action would be yes, no, or abstain on the motion that's before the council.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Thank you very much, Nicolau.
Thanks, Bill.
Item 13 is apartment head reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad Smollet, Community Development Director, this is my report on the planning commission actions of their April 25th meeting, with one vacancy and Vice Chair Dram absent. We had a quorum of five members of the commission. They received presentations from four of the UC Berkeley Master of Urban Design students from Advanced Urban Design Studio, fantastic presentations, and I'd like to note that in the link here just outside City Hall, there are presentation boards from those students. The commission approved a major conditional use permit for a 25,000 square foot beer, wine, and spirit store, Total Wine &amp; More, at 3938 Horton Street, that's a space formerly occupied by Decathlon Sporting Goods. Vote was for zero, unanimous, with chair gets only recused. This store also requires a finding of public convenience or necessity associated with the state liquor licenses for this use, and that is scheduled for the City Council meeting of May 21st. This commission also held a public hearing on the planning regulation changes related to certain limitations on auto-centric and personal storage land uses as directed by the City Council at your study session of January 16th, and is previously reviewed by the commission at their study session of March 28th. The commission unanimously recommended the City Council approve the ordinance amending the regulations as proposed, and this is scheduled for first reading by the City Council on June 4th. This concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Item 14, a future agenda item request from council members. Any future agenda item requests from any council members? Number four.
Before I do that, I have a question. There was a mention about diversity, inclusion, equity committee, and that we don't have one in the city. Is it not enough that many members that sit on other committees are from diverse backgrounds? And if so, this may not be necessary, but if not, then perhaps we should consider a diversity, inclusion, and equity committee in the City of Emeryville, if there is none.
Would you like staff to provide a background on?
That would be great, yes.
Would that be possible for staff to provide background information on just some demographics on the committee members currently?
To the extent we have it.
Okay. Because we could.
Councilmember Pryforce has a hand raised. I have nothing further.
Okay.
So, Councilmember.
Just one moment, one moment.
Oh.
Sorry, Mr. City Manager, we had interrupted you.
No, I was just saying that we're happy to do that to the extent that we have that information. I'm not sure how much demographic information we actually have about the committee members.
Perhaps you all can connect on collecting that information?
That's, that's really what I'm asking for. I don't want to put on future agenda items, something which may be completely unnecessary.
Okay.
So just to clarify, you're, you're asking for us to look at the records that we have and see if we have information about the demographics of committee members, or are you asking us to do a poll and ask people their demographic information?
I would like to see what the committees have comprised of in the past, and how we come to, how we do this committee selection. I mean, I think over the years, we may have data of how the committees are, what they're, who they're comprised of, and whether they are inclusive, and they are diverse. I mean, this is something that I'm asking for, and if not, then is there a better way of proceeding in order to make that more representative of the city of Emeryville?
Maybe I could ask the city clerk if she has details about that.
The only information we collect is generally when they apply, and on the application, the only sort of demographic field is gender. We don't collect anything else. I'm not saying that maybe the committees haven't done something within themselves, but as far as what we have at the administrative level, we don't have any of the demographics of the committee members. Doesn't mean we couldn't reach out and do it.
Thank you. I have something further, but Councilmember Bowthers, if you have any input?
I just, as a point of order on it, it's because I don't want to have a discourse on an item that's not on the agenda, but I do appreciate the inquiry. I think my recommendation, because we did have an inquiry like this like six years ago from a council member, was that there were some legal reasons why we don't request that on applications. For some, for some reason, there's reasons why we can't ask some of that, but people can volunteer the information, was what, I'm seeing you nod. So maybe you could speak to the council member offline and get the information that is voluntarily, is that something you could do? Like if it's voluntarily provided, or if the committees wish to provide it, it could be provided?
If committee members have voluntarily provided that information to the city, that could be disclosed to council members, but as a clerk indicated, if there's not a line on the application field that asks them for this information, I'm not sure how much information we would have, but we could check.
Then I would like to propose something completely different than that, because I understand the legal ramifications that may be involved. So perhaps we could review the application processes of the committee selections, try to make them, you know, optional, have this optional voluntary information, if it is not included, to be included on the applications.
Would you be agreeable to sending that to the Budget and Governance Committee?
Or any other committee that may want to do a study session of how we could improve diversity, inclusion, and equity in committee recruitment.
Okay. Oh, just a, I'm sorry, Fran, it was, it's still, we're done with public comment, but we're almost done, but please stay with us. So can we add, we can add that to the Budget and Governance Committee for the next meeting?
Yeah, as Chair of the committee, I support that request. I think reviewing what, I don't think in my entire time here, we've ever reviewed the application, so I would be happy to take that at committee if a majority supports that, have a review of it, and then bring that back to the council before the end of the year with some suggestions.
Aye. Thank you for the support.
Thank you for the recommendation. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
Sure, I just wanted to share two clarifying points based upon what you shared, which is that for many of our surrounding cities, there is a race and equity committee or commission that addresses many of the concerns around race and equity throughout the policy. So they tend to address those, those issues, as well as makeup and many of the things that you shared. Also, another clarifying point is that, is my apologies to you in terms of my passion around saying that this was a black and brown conversation. Everyone's invited to the, to a conversation. It's just what I wanted to really share was that the term, the label BIPOC, it has its limits, and one of the limits of the term BIPOC is that it doesn't address the inequities that exist between certain populations within the BIPOC label against other populations that they're in, right? And so, for example, in terms of white and Asians overperforming when it came to our first-time home buying program versus black and brown populations. So I just wanted to extend that to you. But in terms of future agenda items, yes, I have a future agenda item, may I? Yes. It's not the pleasure allegiance, it's, that's coming next, but I have a future agenda item, may I?
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So this is the administrative paperwork that was required for me to recertify as a BMR resident in Emeryville. And the amount of residents, in terms of the feedback that I've received from them, they're pissed. They are extremely upset about the inconsistent information that they're receiving from landlords around their BMR certification. And so, not to make this into a bigger discussion, but the federal government has addressed administrative burden as relates to Section 8 housing, and through a Relief Act that was passed several years ago. And so I'd like, as a future agenda item, for us to review ways that we can cut down on, on this being required from people every year in order to, for them to stay in their homes. And so my future agenda item is a review of administrative burden as relates to BMR recertification.
Would you be agreeable to that going to the Budget and Governance Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Chair?
If that, if the staff feel that they can make a presentation, I would say I support it with a contingency. I don't know the parameters to which the city has actual authority over the recertification process versus the property owner, and I don't want to have a substantive debate, so I'm in concept supportive of it coming to the committee as a way to address the council members' concerns, but I don't want to say that with the promise that we have that full authority, because a lot of this is online now, and a lot of it is standardized by other entities. And so I just, without having that discussion tonight, I would defer to the city manager and Chad about whether that's something we can do.
We could certainly bring information to Budget and Governance outlining what the current requirements are, many of them are federally driven, so, but we can outline what all those are, we can outline how we propose, or how we share them with the property owners and hear feedback from.
I support, then.
Any other future agenda item request? Member Pryforce?
Yes, I'd like to place on a future agenda item, a discussion around the pledge of allegiance being returned to council chambers, and I will demonstrate.
Is there a majority support for that? Seeing and hearing none?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the time is 9:23 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.